In my observation, the town of Farmington sometimes gets to it two or three times a winter.
A little harsh there.
The bigger issue with Farmington is that after they flower it, it goes into the street. And if you have a business and you have people that need to park and go into your business, they have a troubled time going over the piles and they're a little slow at cleaning that up for business friendly community.
But the sidewalks.
But this is, the sidewalk is clean. And actually, each individual is responsible for their own sidewalk. So they don't do the town. They only, they're doing this Farmington, that's part of their property, and then they've been kind enough to come across the street and do us.
So they are also required to do the cemetery because they own the cemetery as well. So it's just an extension of, of that sidewalk. So once you hit that tree that I really wanted to take down, and then C and P said, we're not interested in taking any trees down in Farmington because we have tree huggers there, then that is also the town of Farmington. So, so it's kind of an extenuation of.
I didn't realize that, but that's good to know.
Yeah.
Because basically, just they're going to come clean our sidewalk. You know, it just makes it a lot easier on our side.
Yep.
Makes sense.
Okay. Motion's been made in the second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Let Jamie know that was your name. Spirit of America. Bob's priority called and asked when the county plans to do the Spirit of America presentation. Did you talk to him, Amy?
No. But he calls frequently and he emails you all the time. He emails you directly. So he would like to know what the date and time will be. Typically, what we do is we honor all of the towns that participate in Spirit of America, and we have, invite them or their family members to come to the county building, and we honor them again at the county level. Occasionally, we've discussed having a county volunteer to be nominated for this position, but we've maybe not done that since I've been here. So we've only done this twice in the last three and a half years.
So do we want some nominations now to consider? Or, I mean, I have two at least that I think we should consider for a number of reasons. And I don't know how, when you guys did this last year, we weren't elected yet, so we came to watch the process. Some you duplicated from what was done in the towns, but I would say there are some, I think, that are county-wide. For example, I think, I'll give you the two that I have on this. I think we need to recognize Allegiant for helping bring in the Vietnam Wall. I don't know if that town's going to do that. And the second, I think we need to recognize Franklin Savings Bank. They have been an instrumental part of this community with donations. And I'll give you an example. They are donating a significant amount of money to do the free Thanksgiving dinner that John Moore and I are heading up for Thanksgiving Day. And they have been, always been available to this community for those people that need extra funds to do a special project like that. Those are two that I would throw out there immediately as for us to consider.
So when we make the recommendations, we make them direct above, right? Not weaker?
No.
No, that's what I meant, the commissioners.
So typically, the Spirit of America is for a, to honor a volunteer. And I don't know if we've ever seen them honor an organization. I'm not saying you can't do that. I'm just saying that it's usually a volunteer that rises above and beyond for that year through a compilation of many years of volunteering in a, in a community. The county has always had a award ceremony for those volunteers that were brought up from the municipalities, and then we just honor them again and say, you know, we congratulate you. Many times, they don't do a award ceremony at the town level for the Spirit of America, and that is done at the county level. I believe one time, we decided to honor, I believe, one of the radio people, maybe, for county-wise.
Oh, that's right, right.
That, that was done by the county commissioners for, for.
So, I mean, I've been involved in this since I was in the legislature. We can do associations. It's just, this is wide open, it's totally up to us anyway we want to do it.
There have in fact been organizations. I know municipalities have done organizations.
Yeah, we've done organizations too, so that's why I picked two organizations out. I think at the county level. I think you guys did a great job last year recognizing, but they've already been recognized at their community level. We always did it at our town meetings, and I think most of them do it at their town meetings. So I'm thinking that more at the county level, these are two organizations that I think get more nervous than just their community at the town they're in, but it helps the whole community. So I would recommend those two.
Is there some sort of written guidance in regards to what a Spirit of America qualifications are?
It's wide open. It's anything you want it to be.
Anything we want it to be.
There's a website for Spirit of America, and once you've made your decision, we try to upload all of that information to the website so that you can go on there. You certainly can make this decision at any time. And, you know, revisit it or choose whatever you want today. But there is a whole website that kind of goes into the history of Spirit of America and why, why we're actually doing it.
Yeah, it started under Kennedy, believe it or not.
Could I ask that, maybe the staff give us a summary of what that means and have this postponed until the next meeting where we all have a chance to read what it is and then come back with some thoughtful.
Maybe come back with some recommendations?
Yep.
Okay.
Just suggest the same thing.
Yep. Sounds good with that.
It's wide, trust me, it's just wide open. Pretty much, you could do whatever you want to do. We brought it into Franklin County. Franklin County had none of it going on, and a couple of towns did it, and some still do it, still do a lot of it. But it's brand new, and not brand new, it's old.
But not all the towns recognize, because if I remember correctly, when we had, we did one for Steve Filbrick, and when they got the notice of it, the town didn't do anything, but we did it here, and I got, I got a letter from his brother who was absolutely floored, absolutely floored. So some towns do it, some towns don't. So we need to make, you know, if we do it twice, so what?
Well, it's just, they're, that's why you bring the names in if they've been done before. Fine, I don't care. I'm just saying, we should be recognizing more at the county level, and if they aren't recognized like Steve, we need to recognize them here.
So we'll just table that till next meeting? Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Where are we? Route 27 scenic byway. Just run us through it, please.
Okay, sure. I got an email from AbCog. I believe many of you got an email as well. They are trying to revive the scenic byway for, for Route 27. AbCog got this contracted work. They're looking for Franklin County to be represented on the committee, so you would need to appoint a commissioner to the Route 27 scenic byway committee. They suggested that it would be appropriate for one of the commissioners that is setting the unorganized territory between, well, the town of Kingfield and the Canadian border.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I would make a motion that we appoint you, the chair, who has also got that, a good majority of that 27 running through their district, as part of the scenic byway committee.
If I were shoes?
Then you just can't.
I'd second that.
And, yeah, it makes sense, because we're also talking about the improvements to 27 with the, the work with the border, and there were some rumors going around that the border, that whole project had been scrapped, and that I sent a letter, an email to Carly Lee Tremblay, and she said, absolutely not, it's still in the mix, so. Yeah. Okay. Any more discussion?
Just out of curiosity, so you organized the towns to come together for a conversation about this, and then you attended the meetings at the border relative to this. So is AbCog now like a paid consultant to do this organization?
No, this is a separate matter completely. So I think that originally, it was because of the border crossing and the expansion of the border crossing and how that would impact all of these communities going up through. And now AbCog is saying, well, we're going to revive this byway committee for Route 27, which marries really well with this other effort that's going on.
They complement each other, so this would be more support, I think, for what we want to do. And to be honest with you, I'm way behind. They have, the next step is to get with the engineer from DOT and actually ride from Farmington to Copengore, and some of the towns have put in, made requests of what they'd like to see, so that's the next step, is to try to develop a plan, so.
But AbCog wouldn't, they wouldn't have a responsibility for that?
No, 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 no.
The committee on the byway has been in existence since about 2000, I'm going to guess, '10 or '11. And it had some grand plans, some things got implemented, then it fell off the table. So I think what AbCog is doing, saying time to rejuvenate that, the traffic may still increase, and don't know the reason, but that's, so this committee has existed before, done things before, came up with recommendations, and in fact, part of it, if you remember, the Two Dancing People About the High Peaks was a spinoff of this years ago. So they rejuvenated this thing.
Thank you.
All in favor? Communications, UPS backup, battery backup.
I think you guys both got, or I think you got sent a quote from system engineering, and then haven't received like a formal quote from IEC yet. We've gotten the numbers from them at least. So they're both very comparable systems that they've both proposed, both at very similar price. IEC came out roughly $2,000 higher, but I would still, that's my recommendation, being a local company, that kind of factors in if you ever have an issue, you know, 10 minutes down the road versus two hours was a big factor for me wanting to recommend them. But the systems themselves are quite, quite similar.
And so IEC is your recommendation?
Yeah.
Chair, I will move that we award the project to EIO, I, E-I-E-I-O, IEC in the amount of $44.625.
So a motion's been made for IEC at $44.625. Do a second?
I'd second that.
Second? Any more discussion? All in favor? Thank you, Jake. Treasurer's Department, employee wages.
We have a transition period going on. The bookkeeper's last day was November 7th. We received a legal opinion from Libby and Champion regarding the budget items, and the only way that you can reinstate this employee's wages is in an emergency situation. So I am stating it's an emergency, we need to pay our bills, we don't have anyone else in this department other than the treasurer, and that this would need to, she is doing county work, it makes sense that she gets paid at the county budget, and I'm requesting that you deem this an emergency and authorize the treasurer's clerk to be paid out of the county budget appropriately based on the bookkeeper transition.
Mr. Chair, before there's a motion made, I guess I got to know where in that letter, because I'm looking at that letter, and it basically says, "Transfer of items through the contingency fund must be consistent with legislative intent establishing the budget committee as a plain language of the statute." 922-2, that govern the use of contingency on town is limited to emergency purposes, and the refusal of the budget committee to a fund reduction cannot, cannot be considered to be an emergency. So we can't declare this an emergency. And then question four, where we ask, can the county commissioners have access to funds based on emergency purposes? And again, it's a vote of the committee to withhold funding for specific line item does not constitute an emergency under 922-2. And I know that we will be waiting for the attorney general's opinion, which we got yesterday, that basically said Libby's letter is valid. So, but we can't do that transfer. Much as I, if it is a creative way, we can use perhaps the funds that is saved by Ms. Biddle, leaving the organization, then I think that's valid, but we can't declare this an emergency.
The opinion from, from the attorney was that it is up to the county commissioners to determine. Let me finish, Bob. Let me finish my statement.
Don't yell at me, Bob. Don't interrupt. Don't yell at me.
Gentlemen.
I want to make the point that we talked to the attorney, and we, the attorney said it's the county commissioners that determine what is an emergency, and if we so decide, then we can go ahead and take that action.
Do you have that in writing?
I guess we'll get it.
Then, before we vote on it, I want it in writing, because that contradicts what they said in the letter they sent you from July 28th. So let's get it in writing. We have it in writing, we're more than glad to vote for.
Okay, and in the meantime, we won't pay our bills.
That's correct, because you're not supposed to use that money. But basically, that's what it says, you can't declare an emergency on a budget item that was cut. So be sure when we ask them to write it in writing that this item was cut by the budget committee.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Question, Amy, Brenda's leaving will be generating some cost savings. Did we have, did we pay her vacation time? Is there some contingency, some benefit package money to be added?
Yeah, so we had to pay out the remaining amount of her vacation, and we won't have any funds available under that line. Also, the one person that was qualified for the position that we did interviews for comes in at a higher rate of pay due to the salary structure. She has 24 years of experience, so at 75%, she would be at the high end of that line item. So we wouldn't have any savings to be able to use. But the, when I say transition, I want to be very strategic in saying that, that there would need to be some overlap where the clerk for the treasurer's office would be working with this new hire to learn how to do the AP and learn how to do those things. So it does not seem equitable for us to continue to pay all of her hourly rate out of the UT when she's not doing UT work. So I just don't, I, I'm coming to you with a problem, and I believe that there are a lot of conflicting statutes in Title 30A that, that will contradict the legal opinion that we just received. And, and I think this constitutes an emergency, and I'm coming to you stating that I do believe it constitutes an emergency, because people want to get paid, as well as our vendors want to get paid, and we have one full-time person and two part-time people in that office. So in order for us to pay those, those bills, you know, we don't have enough money in that, in that department budget right now to do that.
Mr. Chair?
Wait, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, it just seems to me we're defying common sense. If we refuse to pay for this because we don't see it in writing. I saw the intent when I read the attorney's letter. I had no question about it. I didn't get right down into the details, but it seemed to me very logical that if you have an emergency and we're a public body, that we're responsible for solving that emergency. We have a strategy, and it, it just seems to defy common sense that we would put this off to get an attorney to put it in writing for us, and cost us a little bit more money. I just, I, I can't imagine that was the intent of, of our responsibility.
Mr. Chair, again, I'm just going where the law says, Commissioner. What the law says, when the budget committee cuts something, and you just got in the letter from the attorney general that says he agrees with this purpose, if you don't agree what's in the law, I'm not discouraging, the laws oftentimes don't make common sense very clearly. There's no contradiction. They cut that particular item. Now, perhaps on the part, you talked about the training, maybe we have some training money that we can move in there, because that's what they're doing. But that's what the law says. You can be sued if you use that money, because it's not allocated. All I'm asking for is a simple statement from them, that you, this, their statement that you cannot fill that budget item, cannot do that, that they, that they disagree with their own previous writings, then I'm fine with it. But you have to follow the law, not common sense, you have to follow the law, and that's what the law said, and that's what their interpretation was, that's what the attorney general agreed with. So if you don't like it, he made two suggestions. He said, one, have a conversation with your attorney, which we can do, and we can certainly set up an emergency meeting to do that in a Zoom room, let him clarify that. We don't have to wait too long to do this. We can do this tomorrow, for that matter.
Tiffany?
So as we, as it stands right now, we're paying our part-time person who does some of that finance, whereas our backup for that finance, it's our designated UT, they technically can't do the finance-related transactions, and we have nobody to do that. So what do we do if we don't declare an emergency? Right now, we have nobody. Nobody can do it if she's not doing it. So what do we do?
When, when I spoke with the attorney, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago, and we were talking about statutes, and he said, Title 30A is archaic. He says, the statutes that revolve around county governance is archaic, and it doesn't meet the needs of today. And he said, many counties have this problem, and you have to, you operate in the gray, and I've heard that term several times. And if you, if you follow, you can interpret it any way you want. And that's what he was saying. He said, you can interpret this this way, that way. He said, you have to do the common sense, the right thing to do. And, and that was a, when he said that these statutes are archaic and they were, they were developed a million years ago, doesn't meet the needs of today, so.
I, I, I don't disagree with that one little bit. I believe they are archaic, and I believe that they are outdated, however you want to express it. The problem is, our attorney told us that based on the law, we can't do it. On one hand, he says they're archaic and it's in the gray, but in my humble opinion, you got to do it. So our attorney is, as typical as many attorneys do, they speak out of both sides of their mouth. And if you ask 10 attorneys this question, you'd probably get 10 different opinions. The trouble is, we hired this one. He's ours. And we either accept his observations or we don't. And if he was going to give us opinions and we decide we don't want to go by them, then maybe we just need to shop around, find a guy who's going to give us the opinions we'd like to hear. But until then, I think we're kind of hamstrung. We're hamstrung by having an attorney who doesn't really agree with us, and we're hamstrung by a budget committee that oversees us. So the budget committee has more power than we do. Admit it. Let's admit it. Let's get that straight. And we have an attorney who agrees with them. So there you are.
Could the consultants that we have right now, I forget what they call them.
They don't have capacity.
They don't have the best. Could they hire the capacity for the interim?
Not and train them in time for us to pay the bills.
There may be somebody out there that they know has these qualifications that could do the work.
I, I don't know. I would have to.
I think that's worth pursuing, but I think.
Well, they cut that line too. So if we're talking about what they cut, they cut the Blue Star accounting, they cut for the clerk's position, they, they cut all of that. So if we're sticking to this, we have no one to pay the bills, and we have no capacity to train the new person coming in.
I just, the statutes say what the statutes said. They, they made their comment in there, so you're, you're going against the law. You can't do that. As Tom said, if you want to change that, the way to do it is a legislative group that gets elected or goes into session, you got to ask them to change the law. That you got to do.
So commissioners, I'm asked that you, we need a motion. Either you're going to table it, or you're going to come up with a motion.
I would like to make a motion that we ask the attorney to come on a Zoom meeting with us in an emergency session tomorrow.
He's not available tomorrow.
So he's got people working for him. He doesn't have.
We can make the call, but, yeah, okay.
To give us some guidance? I made that motion in a second.
Okay. Motion fails.
I'm wondering if I could call a person from the audience who used to be an attorney and used to work for the county and was a member of the budget committee, represents the budget committee of the town of Farmington, Dick Morton, if he has an observation here.
Nope. Pam?
So I used to be an attorney too. If that's what you're looking for. But I can't advise you, you're not my clients, and I'm not practicing law right now anyway. But to me, it comes down to a fundamental issue. You either follow the law that we have, or you follow the law that you wish you had. And I prefer the former. And I agree with the, the suggestion that if you want to change the law, consult with some other counties, maybe have the legislature put together a study and, and look into this, because surely Franklin County isn't the only study that is coming up with this problem. And I speak that from my own experience, hearing from county treasurers around the state with budget committees slashing treasurer's departments or finance departments, and the problems that come up with that, because a lot of times, it's the commissioners that don't understand what happens in finance, but a lot of times, it's also the budget committees.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
May I offer that we take out a contingency enough to get us by for a period of time until we can have our Zoom meeting and get further instruction? I'm not sure, a month almost, or something, whatever it takes, that we take enough money. Right now, we don't, as mine is that we don't have any money to pay this, pay for this person, zero.
Zero.
So can we?
Now, do we not have enough money to pay the person? We don't have enough money for the person that has agreed to take the position. We don't have enough money in that department at all.
Can we do enough for perhaps a month or two in order to get this resolved? Through the, through the, through this period that we're finding ourselves in?
But maybe finish.
If you make a motion, you have to have a second.
I, I, that's not a motion. I'm talking with, I hadn't really made a motion, but I can. I will make that a motion, that we set aside enough to get us over this period until we find further information.
That's what I asked you to do. So you have to deem it an emergency in order to use contingency funds.
This isn't a permanent solution, but a temporary solution. I will make that motion.
I'd second that.
So I, my question is, when you find out from the lawyer you can't do it, how are you going to pay back the fund? You need to answer that question. And maybe there's creative language, he could suggest to do this, like training or something like that, but right now, you do not have the money as proposed by the good commissioner. I don't disagree, it's archaic. I don't get mad at me, guys. I'm just telling you what the law says.
I, I agree with you, Commissioner.
Mr. Chair?
It's a tough one. Thank you.
I'm not going to give any legal opinion. Dick Morton from Farmington. My question, Mr. Chairman, to the county administrator is, separate, slightly separate angle here. If the person that you're going to hire as the new bookkeeper needs to come in at a higher rate, where do you find the money to, to pay for that?
So if, the way that we've handled this in the past is if the department goes into the red, we come to the commissioners and ask the commissioners to offset that, because we had a transition in staff during that time period. Now, with this new legal opinion, it's, it's unclear to me whether or not we need to ask, as soon as that line item goes into the red, do we need to come and say we had a transition in staff, which they know, because they approve the staff hiring, that we would need to ask them for permission to use contingency for those, those costs. Now, I try not to do that, because if there's enough money in the rest of the budget, like let's say the employee doesn't need. like, let's say, the employee doesn't need health insurance, and we have budgeted the health insurance, it makes sense to ask for contingency if an designated fund balance presumably to offset those costs if there's enough money remaining in that department's budget.
So, and the contingency, the money in the contingency is where?
Is undesignated. It's, so it's designated funds for contingency, but it's undesignated funds otherwise.
So this would be true with regard to any department? If you had a loss and you were hiring a new person, and that person was coming on at a higher rate?
Sure.
Then the budget would be out of whack, and you'd need to go to contingency to balance it.
Sure.
And that wouldn't be an emergency, per se? I mean, you, in the past, before you got this letter, you wouldn't have even used the word emergency. You would have just said, we're gonna go in red on this line.
Mm-hmm.
It's part of doing business.
That's correct.
And so, we have enough in the contingency, looking at the overall budget between now and June 30th, to cover this. And that's what we ought to do.
That's correct.
Okay?
Except there's one kicker, is that you cannot use money that was cut by the budget committee to be filled back up by other budget money. That's in the previous part of the letter.
Yeah, I'm hearing you. I'm hearing you. And you, so just one other question. So you talked about the budget committee having eliminated this, the part-time position in the treasurer's office, right?
That's correct.
But the person still works there, and you've just been, you've just been funding it through the UT.
So we gave her UT work. So we were giving her the UT AP and the contracts associated with the UT and all of the RFP processes through the UT. And yes, we have been keeping her on board because it's problematic to not have more than one person.
And none of the three of you are capable of doing this interim paywork?
So.
I do payroll, but that's, that's all I do. I don't do my.
Can I? Yes. Yes, I can. I, it's not a good use of the $55 an hour you're paying me, but I can do it. Yeah.
But it also takes you away from other things that you do.
Yeah, I mean, it is, you know, if you looked at the warrants, I mean, I think we probably paid 150 invoices. It's a considerable amount of time. I have done it four years, so it would have to, probably take me a lot longer. And we have to do checks for all of them.
All right, well, thank you for. So you didn't. Thanks, Dick. No, I'm only kidding. We wanted you to come up and wave the magic wand.
The silver bullet.
Because you have the process.
So motions, would you state your motion, please?
That we move enough money out of the contingency to pay for this on a temporary basis, up to, but not to exceed, two months.
Can you second it?
I second it.
Okay. Any more discussion?
Again, I'm going to tell you, how are you going to pay it back? If the lawyer says you can't do it. And I'm not.
You'll still follow the lawyer.
No, you're breaking the law. Period. Done. End of sentence.
Okay. Any more discussion?
And I would like us to have our lawyer review.
Absolutely. Yeah, 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 yeah. Got it right here. All in favor? Close? Great. Earn-paid leave, vacation policy update. Tiffany?
So the earned-paid leave law has been amended under LP 55 and has gone into effect as of September 24th. What that means is, we can no longer cap the earned-paid leave earned at 40 hours. Previously, if you had 40 hours, you rolled it into the new year, you couldn't accrue another 40. They're saying, we can't do that anymore, so we have to remove that cap. That particularly is the part-time employees' focus. The second piece of that is identifying what you consider earned-paid leave under the full-time benefit of vacation tax. So it was recommended in a legal update that we designate or determine what 40 hours of, say, 120, is earned-paid leave to make sure that we are in compliance with the law on the full-time side. We exceed the amount of time that we give for full-time employees. We exceed the law already. But we need to designate the time in which is under the earned-paid leave law.
And the paid policy.
So those two policies, we just need a little bit of language to update that and make sure everyone's compliant.
Okay. Need a motion for that?
I will move to approve the amended earned-paid leave policy and vacation policy to reflect the recent changes in main law.
Second? Second by Jeff. More discussion? All in favor? Close?
No, I'm not.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I could, I'd like to go back to mine just for two seconds. Is that rather than a letter, I'd rather request that we have a Zoom meeting with the attorney so that he can answer the questions we all might have, rather than a letter.
I would, if that's a motion, I will.
Just hold off because there's something around that that's going to come up miscellaneous, and we can tack that on to it.
Okay.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Sure.
Was that not unanimous, earned-paid leave?
Yes, it was unanimous.
It was.
I was trying to figure out how to get that.
Greater Franklin Economic Development Work Update. Mr. Williams.
Hey, thanks for giving an audience. Who has seen our newsletter? Who's opened it? All right. Thank you. Goes to each of you.
What's email?
Going to the county commissioners, but you should be getting it at Dr. Tom. So I will follow up on that.
Yeah, please.
But thank you for that. That is, we point out some specifics of what our work is affecting, but it's also general, so I give you a few more details. So I've broken this update into two sections, what we wish to achieve and where we've had successes. So regional conversations around challenges, opportunities, prioritization, and planning. There's an example of that happening at UMF two months ago. We need more of that. And so that's a goal for ours, for us. We have an OSB mill in J. He's financed, he's waiting for, waiting to make a decision on equipment. The tariffs have thrown him into a, into a holding pattern. But what can, give us a little bit of help. What can the county, the town, the state do? And, you know, maybe it's a gesture, but we need to work on that. And the fact that you folks are, let me, let me back up a second. I love the fact that we've got five commissioners, and you are all engaged in certain areas of your expertise and familiarity. And that, with that, I bring to you the OSB mill and just being mindful of what, how do we make them welcome? And so I realize the county doesn't have any funding, but what else can we do?
Well, let me, let me just, Dr. for a second, Charlie. Jeff has reached out to Mr. Godfrey, and we have him coming to speak to us in December.
Yes. No, no, this is excellent. Jeff, that's an example of our new commission being connected to the community. Jeff is, that's a perfect example of it. So looking forward to that. And thank you for getting J. Co. here. That was very informative. So Educate Maine is a statewide organization focused on creating a workforce, credentialed workforce, to make up for the deficit of retiring workforce. They have an interest in coming to J. and Livermore Falls. They know the OSB mill is coming, so we're excited about that, the fact that we can attract them. So they're working with 1973 Adult Ed, and we'll see more, I'll be able to report more on that. Municipal service consolidation. I know Wilton's and Farmington and J. are looking at examples of that. Where, how much further can it go? AFCOG was mentioned earlier with the Sealy Flyway. AFCOG, for two years now, has had a regional planner, which had been absent for about eight years. And this person is sorely needed, and she is out there in force. And so all of our towns have comp plans that have expired, 12 years ago. And if you have an expired comp plan, you can't compete for federal funds in many cases. So they are, we're working hand-in-hand with them to facilitate, encourage municipalities to be involved with updating their comp plans. And AFCOG's got the planner and really provides some very warm handle in that regard. And with that, zoning and ordinances for, how do you, how do you transition your municipality into today's sort of thinking? You know, density in downtowns, agricultural on the outsides, walkable downtowns. So we're seeing that. J. has got a new comp plan. Livermore Falls is working on a comp plan. Kingfield's working on a comp plan. Carabassin has done a comp plan. And Farmington and Wilton, they're already, you know, they're on, up to speed. So the Northern Border Commission came to town, and they wanted to express to community members, interested folks, there, an area of interest for them in offering federal grant funding, and that area being recreation. And Commissioner Schofield was there in attendance at the homestead. And it's, recreational economies was thriving Franklin County, as you know. J., which used to be the highest-valued town, is fifth, I think. And you've got Carabassin, Rangeley, Rangeley Plantation. They're all, they're rowing. And so how do we support, benefit from this recreational economy? Northern Border is here, and they've got a product they want to put out there. So, you know, we've got Spuce Mountain Ski Area, we've got Titcom, we've got a host of mountain biking opportunities. So how do we help these entities best prepared to compete for these funds? So we're working with them. Childcare, you know, we need additional success, because I'll touch on some of those at the end of this. But it just, we've got to keep our foot on the gas. There is some federal funding coming through Coastal Enterprises, Inc. in Brunswick. They've been a fantastic partner. And so we've got, we've had some successes with them, but we cannot hold back. Wilton has need, J. has need, Farmington has need. So it's, it's, it's present, and it's twofold, at least twofold. If we have quality childcare, nurturing, educational, we're creating citizens that will be productive in the future. But it also allows parents that wish to re-enter the workforce to re-enter the workforce. And so that's why we're focused on that. Repopulating, we're repurposing the Barclay site. You know, that's just a white elephant in Wilton, and it's screaming for redevelopment. And how do we get alignment between the current owner and possible developers? So that's always in play. Opportunity zones. We, they exist around the state, and they are tax incentives for investors. They can put in, if they're anticipating capital gains, they can take those funds and put them into opportunity zone investments and avoid capital gains. And who could use that? J. Livermore Falls area could use that. Angelique could use that. Saddleback, Sandy River and Dallas Plantation. The owners of Saddleback, they're in year five of redevelopment of that. Just a huge success. Who would have thought? And they are, you know, doing not only what they said they would do, they're doing more than they said they would do as far as upgrading equipment, snowmaking facilities, lodge, housing for workforce, housing for skiers. They need to, they need to increase their bed base. Building a hotel would go along that way. In an opportunity zone, that would work for them. So that's what we wish to achieve and stimulate successes. I pointed out the Rangeley Childcare, 75 slots. Again, the partner being CEI, huge vital partner in seed money. And that's, that is our office. We will work with anybody that wants to work with us, and we will help chase federal dollars for that. We will help design competitive projects. And this childcare is an example of that. At $1.6 million of federal funding come into that. The town, the community put in $600,000. The commissioners put in $74,000, $77,000 towards scholarships. That is, that was recognized at the open house they had. And so important to build out their enrollment. And they went further. They got, they got that from the commissioners, and they have gotten the community to understand, okay, this is actually needed for other residents. So some can pay market rates, some need help. And so they have raised some funds for that as well. But it started with the TIF funding from the county that planted the seed. Three, and further on childcare, there's been three in-home expansions of childcare where you own your property, you've got equity in it, your kids are gone. You like kids, you like this business opportunity. There's training from CEI, and there's funding to help support expansion and conversion of homes to be ADA compliant or have more space for more kids. Two workforce housing projects. So our broadband, you've heard me speak about that ad nauseam, but we've had success. Mostly. 96% of the county can connect to fiber. People can move here and bring their jobs remotely with them, or come in, our businesses can grow. More people can move here, businesses can grow. However, unemployment is still historically and dangerously low in Franklin County. Every employer is looking, continues to look for more workers. And a reason that that is becoming difficult, I mentioned our recreational economy driving the county. Folks that need, need service people, restaurants, bars, ski areas, they cannot hire, can't attract people because they can't afford to live here. And you all know that. So we need housing for workforce, not Section 8, but housing for people that will have jobs here. And there's federal money out there for that. We've got two, two projects, one in Rangeley that has been, the town wants it to happen, planning board wants it to happen. They've got property, it is going to happen. Like I say, we will work with anybody that wants to work with us. So they are carrying the water. Rangeley is an all-star right now with their childcare and its housing. They are wanting to carry the water for those two projects. We have workforce housing in Carabassin Valley. You folks invested in that same entity, that same project, and land has been acquired in the valley. And similarly, the town of Carabassin wants it. They're, they're, the planning board endorses it. It's going out to a town vote. They will tweak their zoning and ordinances to comply with that, and that's going to happen. So these are all little efforts that take a long time to get going. But once they do, we'll be able to support the population, the working population that we wish to have. Questions?
Charlie, I just want to take a moment to recognize you for some good work that you did. Tom, Schofield and I attended the dedication of the Wood Bank in Salem, which on a rainy, crappy day, was well-attended. And it was wonderful. It was wonderful. There was so much good happening there. But when they first came to us and applied for the TIF, you know, they came, they wanted this wood processor, and, you know, we said, yeah, go away. Think bigger, better, because what they had was going to be minimal. And they did. And then you tied it to the West Main Community Action. So now, if they're applying for lobbying, or they have a voucher for wood, they also get connected with the cap agency to look at insulation, windows, you know.
I've borrowed less wood.
Exactly, exactly. So, you know, if you've got a, and that was good. So, you know, if you've got a, and that was good. That was, anytime we can collaborate and make things better, and that was you, Charlie.
Well, it was a TIF committee. We've got a good group of creative thinkers, and, but it took support from the commissioners to spur us and to think bigger, which was great. That's what we need.
Tom?
Yeah, just so you know, I don't, we all knew, they got carried by the news, local news, TV news. And Jim Webster is Charlie Webster's brother.
Get out.
Yeah, it is. And he used to live in Belgrade, because he used to be one of my constituents. So, he's sitting there, I said, oh my God, and they named it, I guess, after him.
Yes.
So, you know that. Go back to your question about the OSB plan. I'm sure they've been in contact with their, with our congressional delegation.
Oh, yes.
But would it be a good idea for this board to write a letter to the congressional delegation suggesting that the tariffs are killing us, or that we're hurting our own industry coming here? Is that something that would be helpful? We don't have much power. As you said, we only have TIF, and we're not, they're not eligible for TIF. Or they, no, that facility actually is in the TIF zone down in Jay, unless they changed the name.
Yes, there used to be a TIF there.
But, I think it's still there, because we had it for the whole mail at one time. But is there something, we can write a letter just to say how important this is, and sign it as the county commissioner's?
Yeah, I think that would be a good question for John, when he comes, and Jeff can brush that with him.
Charlie, any more activity with TDS than New Vineyard? Because we might remember them, and you said, a year and...
So, TDS is, they took federal money, and twenty-two and a half million dollars to upgrade their assets in Franklin County and Somerset, part of the Scadquis. We were very lucky in Franklin County, where we were the first stop for them in upgrading their assets. It started in Weld, and worked their way across the county. And they've left four percent of their, of their service area untouched, and they moved over to Somerset and to Scadquis, and I'm trying to get them back. And I'm in constant contact with our federal delegation, and now, to just like, hey, we are the squeaky wheel, please, you know. Because now, we have a situation of haves and have-nots, where half of New Vineyard, half of Strong, all of Freeman Township, and part of Kingfield, some have it and some don't. And so, now we're hearing from those that don't have it.
So, it's basically Strong, New Vineyard, Freeman?
Half of Strong, half of New Vineyard. Say, 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 say half of Kingfield, and all of Freeman Township.
That's where Charlie and I live, of course.
Yeah, paying for five over one and Gladenhut.
Something like it. Good. Any more questions for Charlie?
Ten minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have our courthouse built, however, so let's skip that and go to the conflict, I mean, not skip it, we'll come back to it, but go to the conflict resolution contract.
So, a few meetings back, we talked about this, I think the majority of the board want, or was it, I think they were attending themselves. I have a contract from the, from the Appet Advantage, and I'm looking for permission to sign it.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
It's a six thousand dollar package, I think we have to go to bid, according to the law.
But we, will we pay, okay, yeah.
I did reach out to another vendor, and they didn't provide, they didn't have updated materials, so I did get, reached out to two, it wasn't three, but...
Is there anybody else?
I'm not sure.
It means to me, we need to reach out, whoever we can, just like we started with one, and we ended up with ten. I think we did reach out for six thousand dollars, we can't spend that much, it's more than forty-five hundred. We were talking about twenty-five hundred, one dollar to apply it, so it seems to me it needs to go out to bid.
So, and half of this is covered by scholarship, correct?
By the compact grant, we'll get reimbursed fifty percent of it.
Fifty percent, so the total will be three.
So, we don't typically pay for this, we pay for this by department, so it's broken down to much smaller groups, so it does not meet the threshold of twenty-five hundred dollars for any one organization. But we could reach out to another vendor. I didn't really think it was, because when we go to training, if we send people off to conflict resolution training, we don't typically ask them, even though it costs more than twenty-five hundred dollars, to get multiple vendors so that they can go to training. This is training, this is not purchasing services and goods.
You're signing a contract, though, that's the difference.
Okay, can we get some others?
Yeah, I mean, usually, with training, we register by participant. This is a unique group training, which we don't typically, this is new. So, if that's your desire, I will go out and find somebody else that has a comparable training.
Thank you. Old Business, miscellaneous, wait, 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 there's somebody here that wants to talk about the flag at the World War Two.
Yes.
Is that you?
Jennifer, yes.
Jennifer, please, sorry.
Thank you, pardon me. On our Vietnam Veteran Day celebration, sorry, Veteran Day celebration, I noticed that the flag at the World War One arch was in tatters. As an American native member and a veteran, the help bring the wall here, I am requesting to coordinate with the Boy Scouts to teach them flag etiquette, flag retirement, and the process of how to go about requesting for me to guys how to replace that flag, at no cost to the county commissioners.
I would, I would highlight that motion, that we honor that request with bells, I think that's wonderful. And thank you for bringing it to our attention. And then, thank you for involving the Boy Scouts younger generation, because as I, as a Boy Scout, I learned how to properly care for a flag, and what I taught my children is, there isn't a flag detained in my house, it's all folded properly, put away, and flag etiquette is huge.
So, Mr. Chair, I second that motion. However, there is already a flag, I got the flag, it's at this town office, if you'd go ask them for it, Steve Bunker should have it. The flag was already requested, on behalf of the county, I took care of that. So, that flag already exists, the rest of it should be taken care of, but the flag is already in the hands of the state.
So, just to the town office?
Ask Steve Bunker where it may be.
Okay, thank you.
Because they brought it to my attention a while ago.
I'll second that motion. Motion, move and second it, any more discussion? The only thing I want to say is, thank you.
If I'm wrong, and the flag is not there, I would, certainly we should purchase one, but it's already been donated by Jargor.
So, we, that, that flag's only been up for like, three months, and we were in, we purchased it locally. Really need a good quality flag for that, for those flag poles, so we were in a bind at the time to get the flag up, because it was not in good shape, and it was like for Memorial Day. So, it's not been up for very long, but I have asked facilities to order several of them, so that if we do start wearing through them every six months, then we have some on stock. So, I have asked for a purchase of several of them, because we have three flag poles now, that we need to make sure that we're having good standing. But that was a, you know, a flag pole from Farmington Farmers Union, not, not, I think you need a better quality flag for...
If I'm not mistaken, this flag was better quality when it came, but I just don't know where it ended up, so it should be.
May I ask where the other flag poles are?
We have one at the courthouse, and we have one here over at the jail. So, we have the courthouse and, and at the jail.
And those, those two flags are okay?
Yes, to my knowledge, they are okay.
I was just going to take advantage and get the boys there.
Please, please take every advantage you can with the Boy Scouts and training, that is...
That flag pole is one of those ones that telescopic, so you might need to have a conversation with the facilities on how to, how to operate it.
Okay, so, I can write, facilities is...
Is here. You can reach out to me, and I'll, I'll give you an answer.
Thank you for doing that.
Okay, thank you.
So, any more discussion? All in favor? Thank you so much. David, please.
Sure. Sorry to not have this on the agenda, we just got notification at the end of last week, came to our attention that there is a FERN State Crisis Intervention Intervention Program grant that's available for us. It's a, we're in a less than thirty-day crunch at this point, because the paperwork has to be in by December fifteenth at four o'clock. The, it's basically, with all of the yellow flag and red flag laws that have been passed, a lot of police agencies have brought to the attention of the legislature that we don't have place to store all of these firearms, that they're mandating that we seize. So, this grant would allow us to convert and rehab an area that we currently use to store firearms, to make it more secure, to be able to store more firearms more safely, put a camera on to make sure that things are not tampered with in any way, shape, or form, and have a better record-keeping. But with any grant, we need to come to the commissioners to request your approval to apply for that grant, so I'm just looking today to get your approval to apply for that. And there's no dollar amount on it.
That's right, yeah.
We don't know what the dollar amount is going to be on that, we have no idea what, you know, we're looking at a couple different options, and we'll probably, over the next week or two, we'll figure out what it is that we actually want to do, come up with a price for that, and then we'll have that for the grant when we can apply for it.
Mr. Chair? I'll make a motion that we authorize the application of this grant to be submitted.
Second.
Move and second it, any more discussions?
Major, is, the location of this is going to be in this building, or is it going to be in the old sheriff's office?
To be determined. So, we currently have a storage facility where we store firearms, that is really not what it should be. So, whether that's going to be, we're going to rehab that area, or we're going to do something somewhere else is to be determined. So, if that's part of the process for this, is going to be where, where and what is the cost going to be for that?
Thank you, Major.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. I have one thing to add on to miscellaneous.
I think you still got some old business stuff, Bob.
Oh, well, we skipped over that, okay.
Old Business, yes. It's been brought to our attention that the vendor for our culture study has asked our human resource officer, if I got this right, to come up with a list of names and interview times and contact information, and she is not in a position to be able to do that, do her other work, and if I get out of this wack, just jump in anytime, Tiffany. And so, he, he has, I believe, revised his estimate to some extent regarding what it's going to cost. In addition to that, I was talking with Commissioner Saviole, and he is willing to facilitate some of that on behalf of our staff, rather than have our staff be bundled with it. And I would like to hear from him and what he proposes.
May I? So, I thought about this, as I talked to Commissioner Schofield about it, is that two of the offices, well, the sheriff's office, and I've already talked to Scott briefly about this this morning, I've been working through him and organizing conversations with both his direct reports and his officers that are out there. The, I need clarification for the unions, because there's three of them here, do I need to work with the Scott Stewart to set those up, or would they be individually? And if so, then I can work directly through Scott again, to the officers, and those that are in the union on patrol, and those that are in the union in the jail. But I think my protocols always used to be to work with it.
So, regardless of communication, this is all voluntary, you can't, I mean, union or not, it's all voluntary, right? So, you don't really necessarily need to work through a certain person to schedule these. I don't think that's necessarily Schofield, Commissioner Schofield rather, tried to explain a little bit about why I kind of pushed back to the two that are responsible for this project. It wasn't just that I didn't have the capacity with all the stuff that's going on until the end of the year, it's also that in my experience, when you do these kind of assessments, we want to make sure that there is no bias, right? We want to make sure that we are as removed from this process as possible, so it's not subjective, or it could come across as there's been some bias inserted into this. And that is, the other concern I had was, us being involved creates some kind of, you know, it could create some insecurity there around that, right? Because now, we're going as the organization and trying to set up these appointments, we know who's going when and where, and all of that information. Typically, the vendor would do all of it, so we are hands-off completely. And that is kind of where I was standing on that, in addition to the fact that I have a lot of responsibility between now and the end of the year, as far as reporting and things like that, so...
Well, I think, I think the, when Steve, we reached out to him, because basically, we saw him, we said, he's asking us to do it, and we said, the whole idea was to be as anonymous as possible through this whole process. And now, all of a sudden, you know, we have to be, we have to be removed, a hundred percent, a hundred percent. So, I, I understand what you're saying, Tom, but I think we have to be one hundred percent removed, and I think the two bids we were, the three bids we were considering, the other two basically said, we'll take care of all of it, and they, you know, you don't have to be involved at all, so...
And employees, if they don't want to participate, they're probably going to feel more comfortable with telling him now than any of us, right? I just feel like it's, it's a more open environment there, and that we're removed from it, we're not causing any influence, and I'm not saying that we would necessarily, but it could be, you know, and so we're not pressuring them, they can freely say no, it's completely voluntary, and we have nothing to do with any of that. And then, when we get those results, we are removed from that. And that's the idea, I thought, behind doing this whole cultural evaluation in the first place.
Amy?
So, and I appreciate that you want to help, but when a commissioner called you up and says, when would you like to meet with so-and-so, there's an intimidation factor that needs to be considered, even though you're going to send out a letter saying it's voluntary, it is intimidating for employees to say no to the board. And I don't think that's how you're going to get the answers you're looking for, if we are trying to cut corners on the process by not having the vendor do the job from, you know, planning through the report. So, I don't think that it should be any one of you, and I don't think it should be anyone from the county. It should be, you know, we should know who is and is not participating in this, because therefore, there can't be any, you know, concern for, you know, if you, if that department asks for a grant, and then they don't get the grant, like, some people would consider maybe I got, you know, that my decision not to participate is associated with a decision this board makes in the future.
So, I don't disagree that those are valid, I think, though, there should be somebody here that, and that's what I thought the two people would be, to help at least say, here's your contact. So, for example, the sheriff is the contact for all his people that are there.
That's not what we got from all the other vendors. They were going to get a list of all of the employees and their contact information, and they were scheduling.
Okay, so, will you provide that list to Steve?
Yeah.
Tom, wait, wait a minute, wait a minute. If you're having a conversation with Steve...
I haven't talked to Steve, I'm not talked to anybody. I'm just talking, the only person I talked to is Tom, so don't accuse me of something you don't know about.
I didn't accuse, I just, you've just said...
I just said, will you give that information to Steve? That's all I'm asking, because...
So, the issues came up around the contract. The contract we got stated that the county was going to do these services, and before we sent it to the attorney, I wanted to make sure that that was not what we were doing. That is how this all came up.
When I reached out, I talked to Tom, I reached out to Steve, I said, Steve, we need to have you do all the scheduling, we can't, we can't be involved at all. He said, okay, I'll revise it. I just, I just got it this morning.
Oh, I hadn't seen it.
Well, no, you wouldn't see it, because it came to he and I. So, it just came to us, really, this morning.
I haven't seen it.
No, I, I emailed you like, about eight-thirty this morning, so we haven't even reviewed the contract yet, but he said he would go back and do that, and I think that's the important thing, is, is to keep us out of this a hundred percent. And one of the things, he said, well, I'll need, you know, like supervisors, and, you know, the sheriff, and I said, no, no, I said, we don't, you are going to deal with the employees, you're going to get all the contacts, but we don't go through supervisors or anybody else, because it just taints the process. And he said, okay, I get it, I get it, so that's where I am. I opened the EBL, and I haven't even really looked at it.
I haven't. I haven't seen it. I haven't had a chance to look at it at all. So as of right now, he's revised his con, his process to reflect what we initially wanted.
Exactly.
Can I make a recommendation that Commissioner Carlton and Commissioner Schofield review the letter together and resolve this issue to the best of their ability? Because we've put you in charge of this. And is that appropriate?
I hadn't seen the response from Mr. Frank.
We sent it, I think I sent it to him, I spoke with him Friday and he worked on it on, over the weekend and yesterday. And it just, it literally came at quarter night this morning, so.
Are you comfortable with that, Commissioner Schofield?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Okay?
Thank you, because I, I wouldn't feel now that that was backwards. I'm sorry.
No worries.
But I guess it's good. It makes us all understand the process better.
The other thing is, we need to get our calendars out.
Wait one second on that, though. I believe he's supposed to come in, if I'm writing the proposal, to go through the questions. He gave them to us. But we're supposed to respond to them as a group, not as two individuals.
That is true.
Like I said, let, let's get through this first. Yeah, I believe so, Tom, but I'm still trying to play catch-up on the, on the contract. Get your calendars out. We were supposed to, and my bad, schedule an executive session with our attorney. And basically the, it was supposed to be a consultation with legal counsel. Can't even read it right. Consultation with legal counsel concerning rights and duties of commissioners as a body. And our attorney had suggested this back a while and I thought I was supposed to have, I missed the fact that we were supposed to have it on the agenda today and I don't think we would have fit it in anyway. So we would like to do that soon. And at the same time, we can talk about, we can make a, what we have and we'll, we'll make a separate executive session to talk about what we discussed earlier. Is that appropriate?
My question is, why is the conversation about rights and duties in a commissioner and executive session? The public should clearly hear what our rights and duties are. I don't see that as needed.
Because the attorney suggested it.
I still, he has to explain to me why it is. Is this a result of the complaint that was filed against me?
I don't think it's a.
If it is, then I requested that all those conversations be done in public.
It's not, it's not above that.
I see no reason why it should be an executive session.
Well, that was our attorney's opinion and we, that's a, we, there was more to see how we work as a body. More questions came up than we had answers. So we'd like to do that as a Zoom. And I think probably the easiest thing would be to try to find out when they're available. And I will do that and then look at some, some dates.
You can send us whatever those dates are and we'll do a doodle poll so that we can organize and schedule a meeting.
If I may, I'd like to suggest two things be added to that conversation. And one is what Major Radcliffe suggested, is to look into the process of moving the treasurer to an appointed position versus elected. We'd like to have some guidance with that. Yes, sir?
Correction, that was not Major Radcliffe. That was Private Citizen David Radcliffe.
Oh, it was Private Citizen David Radcliffe. Thank you, thank you. Sorry about that. The Private Citizen suggested that. And then I think one of the questions that continues to come up is a conversation about policy versus law. That they should answer that question for us publicly, so that would be helpful. Some of these may be able to do publicly rather than an executive session. But if we're going to have them come in that day, it might be worth this to be done.
No, we're going to do this all via Zoom.
Yeah, that's okay. I mean, if we do those parts, that would be open to whoever wants to tune in.
What's it, what was the last one, Tom?
The treasurer process and policy versus law.
And policy.
Versus law. When does law over trump policy and so forth? That also deals with things like when the law is silent, what does it mean? I think those are the important things. I've dealt with this for 40 years, so I know about it. And I think it's something that needs to be clarified to all of us.
Okay. So, yes, sir.
I'm not sure where I've read it, but most recently, didn't we read what the law was about treasurers and how we, how they?
I forwarded that email to you guys.
We did.
Yeah.
So what additional clarity do we need around that?
I guess I didn't, I didn't get it.
I was quite clear. It was quite clear to me.
We, the law says we, as a board, can.
There's several options. There's several options. One is the citizens' competition. And they can get the, the proper signatures, do the gubernatorial election and bring it to the commissioners. And, or you can initiate that, that process yourselves by, by the citizen that brought it to you.
I apologize. I didn't get the email.
But I will forward it again.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay. All right, so we're going to do the poll. Is there anything else on miscellaneous? Yeah, yeah.
I was speaking to, which Charlie was still here, but I got in contact with Commissioner Doogie from State of Maine Economic Development for the state. And he's going to do a Zoom call. I think it's at 24. And Charlie's going to be on it. And Bob, I'm going to go over, you know, trying to get to know him and eventually have him come here and maybe talk to us as a board.
What day is it, 24th? Is that Monday? It's Wednesday.
It's a, it's a Monday.
It's a Monday, yeah.
Do you know what time?
I've got a final, I think.
Because I'd like to be on that call. Because one of the questions that we've gone round and round with is plantations being considered as 24th, just a time. Because I have a bunch of stuff that's going on at 24th.
Plantations?
They're not considered in the TIF.
No, they won't be because they're organized.
They're organized versus unorganized.
I still like to push on them a little bit like that.
But if, can we, can I see? We, just, so I get through that with him on that. Because some of it might be what we were talking about earlier, about Jay and everything, so. And then we can probably, I'll see if we can get together with a Zoom call with him sometime, Tom and everybody, so. But just to make you aware of, you know, that's, that's coming up.
I've got a couple of things, if I may.
Go ahead.
So one of the things that I corresponded with Ms. Baker about is something that I think we need to look into next year, next year's budget, just to be aware of it, is we now understand how the elected officials report. We just went through an exercise with a major in relation to reporting. It's time for us to relook at the different levels we have within the department. And I think it's got to be done by a consultant and it needs to be legitified in 2006, 2007. So just heads up, that's all. Handbook, I've spent a lot of time in the last couple of weeks going through the handbook. Something that potentially doesn't pertain directly to us. But I think it's time for us as a group to go through the handbook. As it stating, Tom and I are so used to this in the legislature, one legislature not combined, not stuck to what a past legislature did. So I think we should just start going through it in a methodical way. Just read it. If you like it, great. We move on to the next section. So I'll probably request some pages be considered maybe in the next meeting. Just a heads up again. And then one of the things I also did some evaluation that I think is important for us to learn about is the Human Rights Commission. And I think it might be worthwhile at some time in a future meeting to have a Zoom presentation by them, who they are, what they do, how it applies to us and to our employees. So I will be looking into that and making a recommendation that we decide to do that in a more formal basis. I'm sure you all got the letter from the AG that finally arrived after four months of waiting. And I think that's all I have. Just those are the few comments that I wanted to make. All future things on the agenda if you heads up for.
All right.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I would like to make a suggestion. One of the things that I did for several years when I was in the legislature is I wrote a letter to the towns, the municipalities that I served, along with the state senator and the governor, the school board director, and on and on, to have entered into their annual town report. And I'm sure most people who got the report didn't really read them too much, but it at least emphasized the fact that we existed. And I think it would be good for us, and I talked to Andre about this a little bit the other day. And he thinks that with the, Andre Cushing, Maine County Commissioner's Association, to encourage us to start to do that same thing. Send a letter to the municipalities that we represent saying, you know, it'll be a boilerplate thing. But at least it would give them the opportunity to know that we exist, that we are part of the, we are part of the solution and hopefully not the problem. And I think it's something that, because county government is so overlooked in my humble but accurate opinion, that we need to try to fix that to some degree. So I would encourage us all to come up with a letter. Now, I think it can be fairly, I think it should incorporate all the things that we as a board want, but maybe there might be some special little thing that our district encompasses that the others don't. We can add that to it. But I think that we should find a way to draft the letter. And we need to do that fairly soon because they'll be printing their town reports the first of the year. And that's coming right up quickly.
Great idea. Because you're right, people say, "What do you do?"
Yeah, what do you do? And I think we can outline the things that we've accomplished this past year and the things maybe we're looking at in the future. And I don't know who can draft that. I, when I was in the legislature, I had staff that did that. That was kind of nice. And, but I don't know how we go about that.
So many of your towns are fiscal year towns. So they've already has, have a town meeting in place.
But you can write the letter to be presented.
You can write the letter and then you can send it to them. Yeah.
Ben?
Could I make a suggestion that maybe the administrator come up with some bullet points of achievements that we've had this year since August tomorrow? And let us take that information and incorporate it in our own letters.
Go again?
Is that?
Sure.
Sure.
Ben, you and I should coordinate because I may say something completely differently.
I can't imagine it.
All right. Can I make one, one comment? Dick Morton again. So two things. I was, I was taken by Attorney Schofield's comment earlier.
Attorney Schofield?
Commissioner Schofield's comment. You may not think so in a second. When you're about searching for an attorney who agrees with you, you know, that seems to happen in Washington a lot. I don't think that's a great idea. You want to search for an attorney that you respect. And then if they don't agree with you, you try to figure out why. Secondly, the, the words violate the law or, or break the law, with all due respect to Commissioner Saviole, in a civil manner, I don't really like those words. Not following the law and then accepting the risks that you take by not following the law or disagreeing with your attorney, who you respect but who you've decided not to agree with on a particular matter, and then accepting the risk as you move forward, that's part of governing. And that is what you do and what you've been doing. I've been watching you folks now for months and what you do really, really well in terms of, of governing. So I recognize the frustration that you're experiencing in this process that, that the budget committee put you in in terms of capping some things. And that's, we have a lot of work to do going forward to try to get a little closer together. But I just want to kind of compliment you for the work you're doing in struggling, and you are struggling in this area, but it's not horrible to have to struggle a little bit. I think that's part of the, sadly, that's a byproduct of this frustration that generated the budget decisions, decision that put you in this position. So I just wanted to, I just wanted to say those comments and defend the legal profession. Don't go, don't go find a lawyer who agrees with you because half the time, you're going to end up going down a road you don't want to get down.
Thank you, Dick.
Thank you.
So we need to recess if we're going to do.
Well, I was going to ask, I was going to ask. We have a, a public hearing at 1:00.
So we need to go now. We need to recess.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Wait a minute. Or do we want to go after?
It's just going to get colder.
So.
Well, okay.
Maybe not everybody wants to go see the, the bell tower. And I, if I'm the only one, I'm fine with coordinating. So there's two of us. You all, I mean, it is, it's brutal outside, but I'm fine. I just want to make the suggestion.
Well, we have to allow the public to go, too. I mean, this will be the only time they're allowed up there because it's closed off now. If the public's not allowed in that section.
Well, the only, the only thing I'm saying, we still have to go through, sign the warrants and stuff. Some of us would like to take a break to go to the bathroom. I don't want to rush it. I mean, I don't know how many people would be here for a public hearing, but we could go after.
Yeah.
I'm.
I don't think you have many for the public hearing. I'd be out in the past. I'm fine with that.
I don't know. I don't know.
I think we can go after.
You guys be all right with that?
We need to recess anyway, whether or not you're going up there. To reconvene, you do need to recess if you're taking a recess.
Okay, so let's, let's do, are we all done with miscellaneous? Okay. Warrants.
Move we sign the warrants.
Move in second. Discussion, none. Favor. Okay, and then we're going to go into recess at 12:13, 14:14. And reconvene at 1:00 for the public hearing. And then after the public hearing, we'll go to the courthouse. And then we can adjourn at the courthouse. Does that work?
Yeah, you guys have a meeting. Yeah, we have a problem with that.
What?
You have a meeting at 12:00, or 13:00. So please. Wait, where?
Dick's five.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
The Morton case in Chicago, Republican. Do we do our new team?
Yeah. We have a.
No, we have to, it's set for 1:00. Maybe we should go then. Maybe, yeah, we have a, yeah.
Let's do it right now. We're going to go to the courthouse.
Oh, now?
Yeah. We have a meeting at 2:30.
I got recessed. Yes, recessed.
I'm just going to wait to zoom right up, I guess.
Then we're coming back here.
Yeah, so.
I like this.
Tom, can I keep this? You want to, you want to?
No, I don't want it. I'm going to, I just saw, I had, I had four boxes, six boxes of these I got out of David Mills' house. So I went to every one of them to see if there was something that I could frame. So I found something when he was over two. I found something when Judge Greenwood died. You know, I found something that was part of somebody I knew.
Do you need a copy of it? Would you like a copy of that?
That was amazing.
And then a year later. Thank you. Appreciate that.
You don't want it? Makes good.
Oh, I, I read it. So, what do you got?
I'm looking at that at 1:00.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Backing me up today.
Do not have a number.
So you didn't, you didn't hear back from them?
I have not heard anything back from them. Our drop, our drop deadline is the second. Because it has to be submitted by the 12th unless you have an emergency meeting in between. Then you will, you have to approve the budget to go.
Okay, I will make that call today.
Yeah. Cemeteries are up. We're seeming to pick up a few cemeteries every year. And those costs are associated with lawn mowing and storm preparation, care, cleanings, that types of stuff.
May I ask a question?
Go ahead.
On that, do you include the flags for veterans in that cost?
I think we have a flags.
We, we've been getting them here, but I think, I think it comes under one of those.
Yes, it does come out of the general UT cemetery line.
So there is, there, and they, somebody places them for us?
Yeah, they call us, we order them, they come in well.
Bob, you have them right?
I got them right in the truck.
So you know where the veterans are out there?
We're dropping them off to.
Yeah, I'll, usually what happens is I'll get a call from three or four of them right before Memorial Day. And I'll go meet them and distribute the flags they need. They, they know how many they have to do for each cemetery.
We don't place them, they do.
Okay.
So I just give them to them and they take them to their respective cemeteries.
So also if I remember the law correctly, and I may not have it right, but we're really only responsible to take care of the veterans in some of these ancient cemeteries.
That's right, ancient ones.
Only the ancient ones. So if there anything that's out there that is considered ancient, that's not in association, I mean, I want us to take care of it all. Don't misunderstand. But by law, we're only responsible for the veteran cemeteries. It's a law I passed years ago and had a lot of controversy because some towns didn't want to even do that. Like in Wilton, there are twenty cemeteries around. And each one of those cemeteries has got one or two Revolutionary War, Civil War veterans in it. So we have a requirement, but only to require to take care of that veteran in that area. So if we have anything like that, just something that you can go back to your mind. I'm not suggesting we change it, but that's.
No, we've done a pretty good job for the cemetery associations who come and contact us. And we've found, some of them don't want any money. All they wanted was some flags. And what's happened is some of these families over the years are no longer, you know, they, they drop out, no longer maintain them. And someone says, who's maintaining it? Well, I don't know, we thought you were. And Jamie's been feeling a lot of that and, you know, with Clinton there, we were back and forth a whole bunch of times, but we got it figured out, so. And there still may be a couple out there we're not sure of, but we're, we're getting there.
Well, just keep that in mind.
Got me.
So I guess, are we going to maintain the status quo, or are we going, sorry?
Keep the status.
Okay.
My opinion, keep the status. I just wanted to point that out, keep the status quo.
I think, I think we're hitting all the cemeteries that have veterans and then that we're aware of.
But if somebody calls up and says they found one, and it's just a veteran and, and it's been overgrown for years, we don't have an obligation to fix it. We have an obligation to take care of that veteran access to and the veteran himself, ourselves.
On that side, yes, yeah.
So if we do add a couple more cemeteries on, we, we will run out of flags this year. Because we have exactly what we needed for last year. We got, you know what I mean, I have that much left what I handed out last year. So we took on another two or three cemeteries, let's keep some more flags.
My guess, right, is that, that they know that if those are veterans, then we already have them in the mix. There is a potential, I mean, I probably should order more than what we need anyway, right? Because it's not like you're, every year you have to replace them.
They're gonna use them, yeah.
So, so maybe next year we order three fifty and so three hundred.
About approximately how many do you think you might, if you had to guess?
What was, um, do you remember what the box was? I can't remember, because I used exactly half a box. And I want to say, I want to say like one fifty was half a box.
Right.
Three hundred bags were in a box, excuse me, three hundred flags were in a box, and I used exactly half a box.
About a hundred and fifty flags.
Yeah, for last year.
Okay.
I think that's a good idea, order a box every, a box, order a box and then add a, yeah.
Okay, well, at this point, we don't have any extra to speak of now, for what we have ahead of us at this point. We won't have any left if I give out just what I gave out last year. So we should probably get some sooner rather than later.
Um, streetlights, we have two. We have one at the Madrid Pit and we have one in Colton Gore. The one at the Madrid Pit comes up every year around now. Because the prior board has always allowed the contractor to plug in the loader. And so that spikes the light bill for that light. So I think we may need to bring that up when that contract expires, which is I think next year. And, and get, make sure that they're aware that they're gonna have to cover that bill. Because it's literally not a streetlight, it's a light for the Madrid Pit, so. E nine one one, addressing salary goes Deb Richards. She does our E nine one one addressing, so she orders the, the signs and then we. So, ma, ma, that's pretty much. But she also, we have new people building, and they contact her and they get their street address from her. So it's very similar to what's going on in the municipalities. She also has a requirement to file that with the state website. So E nine one one gets uploaded and then when you go and you call from that address, it's supposed to work. And it has so far. Reserves, the only biggest change in the reserves is the roads and bridges. We have nothing in there right now. While we have whatever came in through FEMA, so seventy-two thousand. The last time we had some significant washout, it was about over a hundred. So it makes sense to rebuild that. And, and to, I just got, I was just in contact with the DOT Bridge Inspector, which gives me heart palpitations every time he calls. Last time it wasn't real good. He did ask for all of the designs for the new bridges. But I'm expecting that those bridge reports will be coming in and we will have another bridge. Because we have a lot of bridges that will need to be replaced. It usually takes us two to three years. We were able to turn around the Overton Stream one pretty quickly because it was such an artery for Madrid and the school bus. Fire protection, all of that, that we were able to turn that around pretty quickly. But it usually takes three years to, to get a bridge. So it's costing us one point two million dollars to replace a bridge. So it makes sense to put three, four hundred thousand dollars away so that you have some money in there for the next bridge and.
Do you think, Bob, Overton's stream bridge, it still says bridge posted signs are up there?
There's a comment down, they haven't been taken down already.
Okay, okay, thanks.
So the animal control, there's still the effort afoot to have the UT contribute to the animal control officer statewide. The administration line is five percent of the overall budget. Summer Roads is up to four hundred and eighty thousand and the road agent is here to discuss that with you folks. The audit costs have almost doubled, well, it's more than doubled, but that's what it costs us to do an audit. And then the other.
Just a quick, may I, just a chair?
Go ahead.
Is it the same guy does the audits for the county, does the audit for the UT?
So it's the same firm and the auditor changes every, we haven't kept the same auditor, head auditor for two years. But yes, they're the only auditing firm willing to take on clients at the moment. So unless we get a competitor to come in, I think that's just kind of where you're at. And we could certainly go too big, but I don't think it would save anything, it would probably cost us.
No, I, I just, I understand you, some auditing firm is in trouble sometimes, and I'm not sure which one it is. With a town or something, I don't.
Probably who did Washington County.
No, they never did.
They never did the audit, that's right, that's what I'm saying.
But there's, I'll see if I can find out. But there's some person or auditing company that is in a debate with the town or the, whatever county they're in. I'll see if I can find out. Maybe I dreamed it, but it just seems to be that recall that thing.
Here's RHR Smith.
Oh, is it R. Smith?
RHR Smith. Ron Smith is the owner and we've used them. At least seven years now. But even when you go out to bid, you don't get anybody, you don't really get anyone. And they, they should be here this week and you will likely, we will have an audit. I can tell you what the undesignated fund balance is now, if I go pull the number, because Mark does it for us. So we have a firm number. Sometimes it's a trivial balance change of, you know, twenty to forty thousand dollars. But it's, we have those numbers because we have a process in place that allows us to do it. They don't do a ton of adjusting entries for us. Like I had a conversation with them yesterday and they're anticipating maybe two or three journal entries. To get, to get the audit completely finalized. It's really uncommon, usually have several page adjusting entries. So this could be twenty, thirty, forty. And, and we're in a lot better shape because we use Booster Accounting. The UT deputy, those are, so this is paying for two deputies and they're both on the COPS grant. And that COPS grant pares down, I believe it was like sixty percent. Now are we at forty or, yeah, we're at forty percent in the second year. So we have two of them and they're staggering, some ones on the second year, ones on the first year. Or this would be the third year in the second year, because it's next year.
And then the landfill Colton Gore?
So I put fifteen thousand dollars into the landfill Colton Gore because I was made aware that we are not, we're breaching the terms of not being in compliance with our DEP permit. And then the other piece that got brought to my attention by both Commissioner Fowler and Commissioner Carlton is we really should do a survey of the Madrid Pit. Because there is concerns that we're in violation of the setback. Which we would, maybe, maybe not, I'd have it here from.
Well, we can't get anybody from LUPC to call me back, so I have a contact to call to enforce it. I did talk to Tom Dubois and he said, yeah, he says, call this person.
But we will need, we do need to add money to get a survey done for the Madrid Pit.
We can, we can call and get an estimate from like ACME. Because I'm sure they've done all the surveying in that area, so they would know.
But if it's more than two thousand dollars, we need break.
I think it's, I think it's five, maybe over five, over five acres.
Okay.
So probably just needs to do an RFP for it.
Did the town of Weld ever send you an itemized, not.
Yep, you emailed, you texted me. You texted me the, the amount. I added it to Weld's allocation and then they did send us a written request.
So that, that went up to twelve thousand, right? Yeah, sixty-six to twelve.
So that's under Perkins.
We added four thousand dollars to it.
Under Weld Perkins, yeah.
So that's under Perkins, okay, I got you.
Yeah, but just eight. For, for lack of a better term, we're getting screwed by all the work they have to do in Tumble Down.
I encourage the fire chief to submit an amount reflected, you know, reasonable amount. I think it was like four thousand bucks or something like that.
I think he gave us an itemized cost of what it's cost over the last few years. And I said, do you want me to add all of that in? And you're like, no, let's just do four thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah.
And I said, okay, but it's fine.
So I'm not to be picky, but should we say Perkins and number six, where it just says Perkins?
Sure.
Would that, is that important enough?
Just for explanation purposes.
Yeah. You know what the real name of number six township is?
No.
Berlin.
Was it?
Yeah, if it had, if it had been a town, it would have been called Berlin.
There is a Berlin song up there.
Yeah.
That's where it went down that rail.
Weld was township number five and Berlin was township number six.
So really the things we need, we, we can prove is we gotta get a real number from Maine Health EMS. And I'm, I'm not gonna, he said he, people from the UT won't call him back enough. Go to the top.
Well, he needs a, he needs a more detailed version than we can give him because he, it's not that. It's Maine Health, ambulance or whatever.
Maine Health EMS.
They do portions of Oxford and portions of Somerset County and they cover a haul of Franklin. So our portion, they should know it, it is what it is. But whatever goes more driven down, detailed portions, hate to say it, but I think that you could go and look into the commitment list and it gives you by UT what those assessments are.
Well, Steve is.
You can go into Madrid's section of the commitment list and it'll tell you the, the valuation of Madrid.
And then the other thing, so we need that number to really finalize this in the surveying cost, correct? We can add that in.
So Madrid surveying, the ambulance service final number?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And what's the third one? Or is that it?
Is it?
That's ambulance service and Madrid survey.
So the process, so we finish the budget, go to the legislature, correct?
By December twelfth, we need to submit the budget to, to Harold Chip Jones and then he does a review. And he submits it in a overall arching bill with all the other UTs to the legislature.
And which committee does it go to, AG, do you know? Almost think, I can't remember, I think it was, I think it was. It was kind of like weird being there and asking why is this in front of us?
Yeah, I think it was.
If you just could verify that, that would be good. And it's, it's gone to, so it doesn't go by county in front of the committee, it's, it's an overall UT.
Everything rolled together.
So, um, my, I remember, I'm in favor of this, but I remember that when we first put in a deputy in the UT budget, there was questions as to whether or not they would accept it. And now we have two deputies in. And part of those deputies are paid out of the COPS grant.
Yeah.
So next year when the COPS grant ends, do we expect that number to jump again?
Yeah.
And so this, fifty thousand dollars that we paid, fifty-two thousand dollars more this year than last year, it isn't for any additional staff, it's just to cover that.
Just cover the difference in the grant. And the, and, and of course the contractual increases that the commission has approved. So both of those pieces. Last year had both of the, had two UT deputies. This budget has two UT deputies, but the grant covered more for each one of them last, in the current fiscal year. And now it, it drops down over three years. One, one of them will drop off in twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
So do we also take money for their cruiser and their equipment and put it in the capital reserve someplace or not?
Yes.
We do?
Yep.
And that's only, just twenty thousand dollars for?
Twenty thousand dollars a year for three years for the plates. And that also includes the, the UT road agents. We do have money in that reserve.
Okay, there's money there.
There is money there.
Yeah. Okay, do we have any other discussion on the?
Just one, one, you know, the percent that we charge for administration, that's statewide.
Statewide, five percent.
So theoretically, if we had, we finished the bridge we're on, and theoretically, let's say we have no more bridges, our budget could be reduced by the fact that that's a million dollar bridge, that's fifty K into our potential administrative budget that goes away.
Yeah.
So the more bridges we build, the more administrative money we have.
Potentially, yeah.
Kind of like healthcare.
I think like, so I, I had always, so I think you have like twelve bridges in the UT. So it's gonna take a really long time for you to run out of money, but that's not, if you're talking about sustainability. I've talked to other UT, if you get to the point where, I don't think you were there, but if you get to the point where you feel like you needed a full-time person, you would put that in under the roads. Because that is what they actually, I mean, they do other stuff, but they actually do more road management than they are. There's not a lot of other infrastructure in the UT for you folks.
You're right, in Rushton County, I believe, they're the, they're the UT manager, whatever you call it, with roads is my primary responsibility. Because they have so many roads up there.
Yeah.
But Somerset just advertised.
He's retiring.
Yeah.
So the UT manager for Somerset County is retiring. He's been there for like fifteen or sixteen years, so, yeah, there.
So does our road manager not come in under this budget?
Yeah, he does.
Yep.
And, and it's under, is it under administration or where?
No, it's under summer, it's under roads.
Under summer roads?
Mm-hmm. And I did add the ten, a hundred thousand dollars you asked for for.
Thank you.
Yeah, for the number six.
Okay, do we have any other?
We, we gotta come out of the budget here.
Well, yeah.
We gotta close the budget, the public hearing.
Okay, we're gonna close the public hearing at, at one twenty-three. Okay. We're closed, I think we're out of, um, you just wanna say something, Tom?
No, no, just now, I think.
So I think.
It's a motion or do you?
No, I'm, no.
We can't do it until we have the right.
So I think we need to get the last two figures to really have an accurate number and, other than that, I think we're.
Could we make a motion pending those two numbers? To accept the budget as we have presented to us pending the last two numbers? I think you could do that.
You can, yeah. I mean, we'll just tell you what those numbers are and give you an updated budget. Have you already approved the warrants?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, yep.
I would make a motion when we approve the budget as presented, pending the two other numbers we need to come in and just be advised what those numbers are when they finalize the budget.
Second.
Moving secondly to, except UT budget is proposed minus, except for the two line items that we're waiting on. Any more discussion? All in favor? I think that's everything on our agenda. I would, obtain a motion to adjourn.
I will move that we adjourn today's meeting.
Moved by, and seconded by Jeff, Mr. Gilbert. All in favor? We are adjourned.